Back to where it was.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Alleged allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, as a republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we ask Chapman Caldwell to do the invocation for us tonight. And please remain standing for a moment of silence to two citizens of the town that passed away in May, Joan Ventrella and Gal Buie. Thank you, please be seated. At this time, in accordance with State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts and interest and appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in particular matter involved. Okay, hearing none. Would like to add an item to the agenda tonight at a closed session. Attorney-client privilege at the, which would be item number eighteen. We'll just make adjournment to item number nineteen. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Chief Silla, introduction of our new police officers.
Got a couple people I want to introduce to the town and to the board. The first person I want to introduce is, we've been lucky enough to get an intern, a volunteer student here. We'll have him for ten weeks. And that's Jacob Edwards. Jacob is a recent leader for North Carolina. He was in the National Guard. Commissioned a second lieutenant. Next up is Jessica Locklear. Officer Locklear has been a law enforcement officer for over thirty years. She's a retired captain with North Carolina DMV License and Theft. And prior to working for DMV, she worked for the Tistant Police Department for many years. And she will be our new training coordinator. So everybody welcome Jessica for me. And our next, next officer is Sandra Delorme. She's a volunteer reserve officer with us. She has sixteen years of law enforcement experience and was previously with the Neighborhood Watch and Community Policing Coordinator from here on out. So if you would, just go ahead and welcome her to town. We have two more that I'll present at the next meeting. We have two full-time officers, Peralta and Officer Wilkie. They couldn't be here tonight. One's on vacation, the other had family obligations, but they will be at the next meeting.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Next up is public comment, Ray Waldbuser. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please give your name and address.
All right, my name's Ray Waldbuser, one of two Osprey Court. Just wanted to make a very brief statement about the removal of the SRO officer from your budget. We talked a little bit last month about it. We do appreciate Carteret County, Cape Carteret Police Department for supplying an SRO to White Oak for a very long time. I think it may have been one of the first elementary schools to have a dedicated SRO. So talked to Frank Deal, one of the previous chief of police's earlier today, and he thought it was around his time when that happened. So had one there for a very long time. And, but I know the budget being presented tonight reassigned that SRO position to community-wide patrol and response. Understand the reasoning y'all did that. And, but we fought a couple of years ago to get SROs in every Carteret County school after the Uvalde shooting. And the bottom line for all us grandparents, parents, friends of kids in school is that there is an SRO in duty on the first day of 2024, 2025 school year. Doesn't matter what police department it's from, but we need one in there. So we want you to consider your budget, number one. But number two, if that's not possible, that the, that you continue to work with the Board of Education and the Carteret County Commissioners to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Next is Paxton Holtz.
Thank you, folks. I'd like to speak to you briefly about the boat ramp at Manatee. I think it would be a great service to the users of the boat ramp if the town were to consider putting a portable toilet down there. I've heard people say that the first stop they make after launching their boat is to go to one of the islands. And we could at least spare them that if the town were to put in a portable toilet. You can get one from Toy Toy for a hundred and six dollars and
It's a hundred and three seventy-five a month.
Hundred and, well, I had a hundred and six seventy-five a month. So if you would consider that. Now, I have to tell you, I think it's a little cold-blooded of the town to sell two hundred and eighty-five passes and have approximately twenty parking spaces. And according to the budget, you believe you're going to gross over ninety thousand dollars in ramp fees. Now, you pay rent of sixteen-five. And if you want to rent more land for parking, I'll be glad to do it for you. I'll talk to the attorney and the town manager and the Board of Commissioners, the planning board for more parking places, if you wish, if you wish. But I think it's really tough on people who want water access and have so few parking places for so many ramp passes. Another thing is because the town traffic using the boat ramp was washing away, literally washing away my property. When the town decided to bulkhead the park at the end of Manatee Street that my parents gave the town, I was all for that because it was washing away. The two people on the west side bulkheaded their sound front lots. The town bulkheaded the end of Manatee, and I bulkheaded a hundred and twenty feet from the park to the ramp. And that cost me thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Now, if you're grossing ninety thousand a year and you've got till 2031, you're making a fortune off my ramp. And the least you could do was pay for the bulkhead. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Ms. Dot Marsky. Ms. Dot?
I'm Dot Marsky, and I live at 104 Fairway Lane. And I've been living in Cape Carteret ever since nineteen eighty-seven. And I've seen it grow from a teeny-teeny town to what it is now. And I love this town, and I care about it. And I speak no man, and I've gotten results. And I've been very willing to do good things for the residents if they only know about it. If no one tells them, they can't do anything. And they're trying to get a, everyone's email address so that every month they can send a newsletter. And you can get the dates of what's happening, when the yard pickups are going to be, and the recycling and everything. And it's a beautiful newsletter, and it's very informative. So if you, whoever's in Cape Carteret, be sure you contact Town Hall in some way and give them your email address. And I also feel that the town of Cape Carteret should not have to pay for the resource officer at the school because it just so happens that the town has a school in it and they have a police force. Whereas the towns that don't have a police force, they don't provide the officer. And so I believe that the Commissioners shouldn't be encouraging people from towns who do not have police officers to come to Cape Carteret and say, no, it's not fair that you don't protect our children. It isn't that we don't want to protect the children, we just want to do what's fair. And I spoke about this last month, and I just wanted to tell because last month, a lot of people were here from out of town. And a lot of people that are here, you know, please give them your email address so that you can find out everything that's going on because it's very informative.
Next up is the Planning Board Report, Vice Chair Holtz.
Commissioner Ritchie is informing, he's going to cut me off after three minutes, so I'll try to be fast. All right. The town of Cape Carteret Planning Board met April sixteenth, 2024. Members present were Mini Truax Chair, Paxton Holtz, Ted Williams, and Jeremy Granger. Corvus was present. Ms. Truax made a motion to excuse the absence of Laura Nelson, who was not in attendance, passed unanimously. Mr. Jonathan Lucas, 120 Sutton Drive, presented comments. I won't go through those because he has told me he's going to speak again during the open session for the town center zoning. All right, the town home site plan preliminary plant review was presented. Ms. Shamball provided an overview of the project identifying the location of the additional overflow parking subject to the zoning ordinance amendment, including on the planning board agenda. Discussion ensued. Planning Board recommended unanimously that the town amend its UDO to allow overflow parking in the town home. Motion was approved unanimously. Mr. Granger made a motion to recommend approval of the site plan to the Board of Commissioners. Motion seconded by Mr. Williams. Motion approved unanimously. Mr. Rush provided a recap of the proposed ordinance amendment to remove the prohibition of common parking lots in the R10M zoning district. After discussion, Mr. Granger made the motion to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to remove the prohibition of common parking lots in the R10M zoning. Motion was seconded by Mr. Williams. Motion was approved unanimously. The ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance to establish the town center zoning district was discussed at length. The planning board discussion ensued to include specifying the use of concrete and brick sidewalks and incorporating existing special uses into the table of permitted uses. Ms. Holtz stated that she would abstain from voting, which did. Mr. Williams made a motion to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to establish the town zoning center district with the following changes. Add concrete and/or brick sidewalks to Section 1110B, 3I, and change identified special uses to permitted uses in the town center mixed-use district in Section 115, Table of Permitted and Special Uses. Motion was seconded by Mr. Granger. Motion was approved unanimously by the three voting members. Ms. Holtz abstained. That counts as an affirmative vote. All right, ordinance amending Unified Development Ordinance to rezone the west side of Bog Sound Drive from R30 to R10. Mr. Rush provided a recap of the proposed ordinance amendment that would rezone the west side of Bog Sound Drive from R30 to R10. In discussion, Planning Board members identified the desire to include only parcels addresses 104 to 106 Bog Sound Drive. Mr. Williams made a motion to amend the UDO to rezone addresses 104 to 206 on the west side of Bog Sound Drive from R30 to R10. Mr. Granger seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. The next planning board meeting will be May 21st, starting at 5:30 PM. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Paxton.
Okay, next up, item number ten is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second? Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is item number eleven, ordinance amending UDO to remove the prohibition of common parking lots in the R10M zoning district. Take it away, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. As Mrs. Holtz alluded to during her recap of the planning board meeting a few minutes ago, one of the items that the planning board reviewed was this ordinance that would remove the prohibition on common parking lots in the R10M zoning district. So R10M is our single-family and multifamily residential zoning district, allows single-family homes and also town home developments in that district. The ordinance that you have before you tonight essentially just makes a very simple change. We had some, we have some language in the UDO currently that does not allow any common parking lots. The way that the ordinance was structured by the previous planning board and the previous Board of Commissioners was to require that a minimum of two parking spaces be provided for each individual town home unit, and that those parking spaces be provided either in a garage and/or in a separate driveway for the individual unit. The thought behind that provision was that they did not want to have larger parking lots scattered around the development, and they wanted to make them feel more like single-family units, therefore the requirement for the two individual parking spaces. So that ordinance currently specifically prohibits the common parking lots. When the planning board reviewed the site plan for the proposed town home development that's next on your agenda, the planning board was concerned that there was no overflow parking. As you probably have seen in the packet, as you will see in just a minute, there are two parking spaces provided for each of the individual units. The planning board was concerned that if those individuals had guests or maybe they had a child with a third vehicle or so forth, that there wouldn't be ample parking. So the ordinance amendment for you tonight is very simple. It simply removes that provision and eliminates the prohibition on common parking lots. Still retains the requirement for two spaces per unit. Still requires them to be either in the driveway or in the garage for the individual unit. So happy to answer any questions that you may have about the ordinance amendment. And there is also a public hearing required prior to board consideration of the ordinance amendment.
Okay, we need to go into public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. We're now in public hearing. There's no one on the list that wants to speak about this? Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this? Raise your hand. Hearing none, need a motion to come out of public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Need discussion on this?
Make motion to adopt the ordinance amendment, Unified Development Ordinance to remove prohibition of common parking lots in R10M.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan's made the motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Ford, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Next is item twelve, site plan preliminary plant review for the lakes at Star Hill Town Homes. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Just a brief summary, I've put a copy of the site plan up on the screen. The Board of Commissioners has larger versions of this in your packet along with a few other maps indicating the proposed project. It is a twelve-unit town home complex. It's located at 123 Taylor Notion Road. That is directly to the north of the entrance to Star Hill Golf Course. The property is zoned R10M. That is the zoning district that allows single-family homes as well as multifamily town home developments. The property has about five hundred and sixty linear feet of frontage on Taylor Notion Road. It's approximately 2.3 acres. One of the requirements in our ordinance is that a minimum parcel size of two acres is required. So this parcel meets that requirement. It's 2.3 acres. The ordinance allows up to 5.5 units per acre. Again, this proposal is for twelve town home units. That comes out to 5.2 units per acre. Our ordinance also requires that there be no more than four units per structure. And as you can see on the site plan, we have basically three structures with four units in each of those structures. There is a garage included in each of the twelve units. There's also a driveway in front of each of the twelve units. The applicant has indicated that the two parking spaces for each unit would be accomplished via the garage and the driveway. You'll see on this version of the plan, there are six overflow parking spaces. They're located between the clusters of buildings. And with the board's adoption of the ordinance amendment just a few minutes ago, that this overflow parking is included in the plan for your consideration tonight. There's a twenty-foot-wide landscaping buffer all along the perimeter of the project. There is a new fire hydrant that's essentially right in front of the second unit in the middle for unit town home building to make sure there's adequate fire protection for this facility. The applicant has submitted documentation creating a property owners association and a budget for that organization that would be created to maintain the common areas associated with the development in the future. The applicant is in the process of obtaining other required permits, including state stormwater, erosion, sedimentation control, septic, and also approval for water and electric connections. Based on all of the discussions to date, we believe that they'll be able to obtain those permits and those approvals for the connections. Your approval, if it's granted tonight, is contingent on them securing the permits and the appropriate approvals without adjusting the site plan that's presented for your consideration tonight. We believe they'll secure those with relative ease going forward and that no additional changes would be necessary. If however there are, and there are substantial changes, we'll bring this site plan back through the planning board and ultimately the Board of Commissioners at that time. The applicant has indicated they intend to subdivide the project. So there will be twelve individual town home units recorded. You also have a copy of the preliminary site plan in your packet. The board's requested actions tonight are twofold. One is to approve the site plan. The other is to approve the preliminary plat for subdivision purposes. If the board approves both of those items tonight, the applicants would construct the project. Once it's constructed, we'll inspect the project for compliance with the site plan and other town requirements. And if it complies with all applicable town requirements upon completion of construction, we'll return back to you at the end of the process with a final plat for your approval. And that final plat would then be recorded. Any units could be marketed for sale, et cetera. The applicants are here tonight, and their representative, Josh Edmondson from Tide Warner Associates. I'll see if Josh wants to make any comments, and certainly if you have any questions for him or for me, we're happy to answer those questions. We have reviewed the site plan and the preliminary plat. We believe it is in full compliance with the appropriate associated requirements in the town's UDO. The planning board, as you heard, reviewed it actually at two meetings in recent weeks, and they unanimously recommended approval of the site plan and the preliminary plat. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we need to go into a public hearing.
There's actually no public hearing required for this item.
Okay, I skipped down one, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions for Frank or the applicants? Need discussion? Hearing none, accept a motion to adopt?
Make motion to approve the project and the preliminary plat.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thanks, Chris.
Unanimous. Congratulations to the applicants. Next up is item number thirteen. Ordinance amending UDO to establish the town center zoning district. Frank, you're up again.
Thank you. This is the beginning of the end of this process. We've been working on this process for at least the last ten, nine or ten months at the ordinance stage. Obviously, it was discussed during the comprehensive and KAMA Land Use Plan process over the last few years. Essentially, the graphic on the screen is just a graphic illustration of the kind of development that is outlined in the town's KAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan for the area generally consisting of the triangle area between Taylor Notion and 58 and Highway 24. These are some just sample photos, but essentially the goal that was outlined in that plan was to create more of a village-type atmosphere, mixed-use type developments, mixture of residential and commercial uses, an allowance for multifamily residential projects in a village-type feel, and hopefully to create a very special and distinct sense of place in this area of Cape Carteret in the future. As you all know, it's an area where there's significant remaining undeveloped land. It's also an area where all, most of the existing commercial development in town is located. So the vision that was outlined in the KAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan is pretty much to achieve something kind of like this. And you probably have been in other communities where there's similar type developments, again, trying to promote public gathering spaces, locations where people can maybe go to get some dinner, get a drink, live in a condo upstairs, maybe there's a town park in there, hopefully a distinct sense of place in Cape Carteret. So what the board is asked to consider tonight is the actual ordinance, the nuts and bolts that would essentially implement that concept that I just described that's included in the land use plan. And so this is the nuts and bolts. This is all the specific requirements that would hopefully enable us to achieve this vision, make this concept a reality in the future. There are a few key things that I want you to be aware of and want the public to understand. Number one, it's intended to achieve this vision that the people of Cape Carteret said they wanted and that the Board of Commissioners adopted in that plan. Number two, the ordinance that's presented for your consideration is deliberately structured to be relatively simple and straightforward. It's deliberately avoiding being overly prescriptive. It's intended to be easy to understand, easy to implement, not only for our staff, but for any applicants, landowners, developers, but also for the general public so that people have a clear idea of what's allowed and what's not allowed. It is also intentionally structured to be very flexible. It's intended to provide additional development opportunities for landowners in that area or any prospective developers who may acquire property in that area in the future. It's also intended to be a cooperative relationship with landowners and developers. The ordinance that's under consideration by you this evening, specifically and intentionally, doesn't take away any of the existing land uses in that area. It simply adds many other land uses, all of which are currently allowed as a permitted or special use in the existing zoning districts in this area. But it allows them all as permitted uses. And quite frankly, it's intended to be lucrative for the landowners in that area. It is specifically intended to incentivize this kind of development. And to use real simple terms, I hope that the ordinance that's presented tonight, if the board adopts it in something close to what's presented, if the board adopts it in something close to what's presented, that it almost makes it a no-brainer for someone to utilize the town center zoning for this area of town. But ultimately, it's designed to achieve that vision that our community said that it wanted. Some of the specifics included in here. Number one, the properties in this area, let me show you this map also. So the dark line is the target area that the town center zoning district would at least theoretically be applied to. And let me be clear that what you're considering tonight is just creating the zoning district, creating the set of rules, the framework for the development that would occur there. It would be a separate process where we would come back and say, okay, we want to rezone this parcel, that parcel, this parcel, et cetera, to the town center zoning district. So it's a multi-step process. Tonight is just creating the zoning district, creating the rules. But the way that the ordinance is structured, if you look at the existing zoning, the red is B20, the blue is R20, the yellow is R30. The way the ordinance is structured, it allows the applicant, the developer, the landowner to rely on that existing underlying zoning if they so choose. It's well-established and been used for many years in Cape Carteret. But it also allows them to use the town center requirements that are outlined in this ordinance. It's their choice. As I mentioned earlier, I will tell you it's intentionally structured to kind of make it a no-brainer to pick the town center because it gives a lot more flexibility, allows for more creativity, and quite frankly, is more lucrative for whoever's developing the project. But it intentionally includes all of the uses that we currently allow in B20, R20, and R30. One of the things that Mrs. Holt alluded to in her planning board report, one of the things that the planning board suggested and is incorporated in the ordinance for your consideration is they did not want to have any special uses in the town center zoning district. They want all of the uses to be permitted uses. Those are all outlined, I'm sorry, underlined in the zoning ordinance amendment that you have in your packet. But that was one of the changes that they made as they reviewed this over the last several months. In terms of density, it would allow up to eight residential units per acre, whether that is a mixed-use building or whether that's just a multifamily residential building. Whether it's condos or townhomes or apartments, it's up to eight units per acre. There's also a provision for something we've called and defined as village, single-family residential development. And that's basically sort of smaller, traditional cottage-type homes. The ordinance that's presented for your consideration allows six units per acre of those. Those would be on individual lots. And they're intentionally intended to be smaller, closer to the street, kind of create that village feel. All of the ordinances are specifically intended to kind of move the buildings closer to the street. In order to use the town center zoning, you have to have a minimum parcel size of one acre. If you want to use the village, single-family residential, the minimum lot size is 7,200 square feet. That comes out to that six units per acre that I just mentioned to you. The ordinance specifically says that the building setbacks are a minimum of five feet on the front and a maximum of 10 feet. So you might have the house or you might have the building setback seven feet, six feet, but you can't be further than 10 and you can't be closer than five. Again, it's trying to create that vision that was shown in the pictures and in the plan going forward. The side and rear yard setbacks are five feet. There is a provision in here that requires a 30-foot buffer when the parcel adjoins any residential property. So the only property in town that would theoretically be located adjacent to the town center zoning district is Arden Oaks. So this ordinance has a requirement for a 30-foot setback in a 30-foot buffer adjacent to any residential neighborhood. That is absolutely consistent with what we currently require between residential and commercial developments in the town to provide an additional level of protection for any single-family neighborhood located adjacent to town center. Based on the current thinking and the area in the dark line, Arden Oaks is the only area affected. But in the future, maybe there's a desire to rezone other properties in the town to town center if they're adjacent to a single-family residential neighborhood. This ordinance calls for that 30-foot buffer. The ordinance also requires that at least 25% of the project site include vegetated area. And there's wide latitude in what that 25% might be. It might be the wastewater drain field. It might be existing natural vegetation that's saved. It may be landscape buffer. It may be planted vegetation. It's really going to be up to the applicant to propose that, but trying to mix in the green space in the town center area. It also requires a landscaping plan that incorporates street trees and landscaping in the public rights of ways. So in those streets that are adjacent to any new development, hopefully, they're going to plant trees and have attractive landscaping in those areas. An important provision is that all of the parking has to be located either on the rear or the side of the structure. Again, trying to move the buildings closer to the street, that village atmosphere. If it's a collector street, designed more for through movement of vehicles through the area, they're required to be public streets. They have to have sidewalks and curb and gutter. As Mrs. Holt mentioned in her presentation, one of the things that the planning board was concerned about is they want those sidewalks and curb and gutter to be made either out of concrete or bricks and have an attractive design. If there are other subdivision streets that are not collector streets, there's a lower 28 feet wide, for example, and they're also allowed to be public or private. So that may be some of the streets that might go into a particular subdivision that's created. Signage is consistent with the town's current sign regulations. With one exception, we currently require any freestanding signs to be 20-foot back from the property line. Clearly, in this example, we're wanting people to put the buildings within five to 10 feet back. So there's a five-foot setback for the freestanding signs outlined in the town center zoning district. It has been, this concept's been discussed again for the last couple of years. The Board of Commissioners reviewed a preliminary version of this ordinance in August of 2023. I had several meetings and discussions with the affected landowners essentially between September and December of '23, early '24. The planning board reviewed the proposed ordinance at their meetings in February and in April. As Mrs. Holt mentioned, it was a unanimous recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Look forward to answering any questions you may have and in hearing your discussion tonight about the ordinance. As noted, there is a public hearing required before you take formal action on this ordinance. So I'd ask you to call for that public hearing prior to any formal votes on the ordinance if you're so inclined tonight. This is a big deal, so I want to make sure that you all are comfortable with this. If you are and you feel good about this tonight, please vote on the matter. If you're not, please take whatever time you think is necessary to get this right and make sure that it aligns with your goals and your values for this community going forward. And at the end of the day, hopefully, it'll be a very nice, vibrant, attractive part of the community still several years from now, but you got to start somewhere. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Frank?
I got a question about food trucks that's in the list. It's not a brick-and-mortar type thing.
Yeah.
Is that something that we're wanting like for just events, like a fall event? Or is that something you're saying that's okay to have in this?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great question. So food trucks is included as a permitted use in this proposed ordinance amendment because it's currently a permitted use in the B20 zone, which is our red area, the main commercial zoning district in town. So the intent was to take all the existing permitted uses and just roll them into town center. If you, for example, think that that's maybe not appropriate, then absolutely you all could make a decision to remove that from the list of permitted uses in here. We currently allow food trucks in our commercial zoning districts. Some people love them, some people not very fond of them, but our ordinance currently allows them and that's why it shows up here. But if you think it should be changed, you have that latitude.
How much do they pay for a permit?
I don't, it's probably the $200 permit. In all honesty, I'm not quite sure, but it's a minimal amount.
It just kind of takes away from the brick-and-mortar businesses to me. They're here like setting up shop and they haven't even invested really just their own truck.
Yeah, and that's a valid argument and that's a common argument that you hear, so.
Well, just to continue on that, could, could a food truck owner, let's say, buy an acre and set up their truck? You know, you see it in other places in Carteret County where they just sort of operate out of their truck like it's a fixture, you know, on a parcel. Or is the food truck limited to just a certain time, let's say like a fireworks display or something like that? And then they're here for that event and then they're gone when that event has concluded.
Yeah. So our current ordinance is pretty tolerant of food trucks. Pretty much allows them to set up at any existing business in town, provided the zoning is appropriate. There are no significant limits on the timeframes or anything like that. So they wouldn't necessarily even need to buy a piece of land and set up on it there. It's pretty much allowed. And that may be something in general you want to revisit either as part of town center or maybe for the broader town, commercial areas in town. But it's pretty tolerant. We allow food trucks, basically. Now, and then there's the difference, you know, if it's a special event, like if it's the July 4th thing or maybe if it's a fall festival or something like that, they're typically always allowed for those kinds of events. Those are generally publicly sponsored, special events and an intent to have them there. But just as a matter of general practice, we allow them in the town.
Any more questions for Frank? If no questions, we'll take a motion to go into public hearings. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're now on a public hearing. We have two people signed up. The first one is Jonathan Lucas.
Just to clarify, it is a $200 permit fee.
Good evening, Jonathan Lucas, 120 Sutton Drive. I just wanted to say a few words here to say that I support this town's town center zoning district. I am, I have some involvement in the forestry business, so I am a little partial to seeing standard North Carolina pine trees along Highway 58 as I drive by. But if the area behind Lowe's and Low's is going to be developed, I support this town center zoning. And it's really honest, I think it's intuitive. If you're going out, if you want to go somewhere, Morehead City Waterfront, Front Street in Beaufort, downtown Swansboro, it's just, these places are way better than strip malls and parking lots. If we're going to build, let's build the downtown. So the next part of my comments, not so much focused on whether to vote for it tonight. I do hope you do vote for it. But just, just some thoughts going forward that I think that since it's on our mind right now just to bring forward to the board for consideration is, so what I want to ask for is the leadership of our town is fully involved in planning and engagement with developers and landowners every step of the way on this. Use the word planning again. I know it's, I know it's way too early to be putting down features on the map. You know, town manager specifically said we want to be intentionally vague and not prescriptive right now with how this is going and in general. But at the same time, I think there's some important things to talk about now, ways and means so that when it comes time to actually look at plot plans, we're ready for that. So there are 17 undeveloped tracks in this town center zone, approximately if my math is correct. If, if a developer buys one of those tracks, that developer is going to build something on that tract that is profitable for their company on that tract, which is perfectly understandable. But that alone is not necessarily what this town needs. What we need is our town leadership to oversee a comprehensive plan that unifies all the tracks and connects streets between the tracks, the multi-use path creates public areas, possibly spanning different tracks. These are what make downtown areas nice. And I mentioned Morehead, Beaufort, and Swansboro. We don't have water as an attractant to our downtown. So some sort of larger public area is what we would need to make this an actual nice area. And I don't mean just nice, but necessary. So all the development that happens in Carteret County, you hear a couple of major complaints every time. Big one is always traffic. And the response to that typically as well, DOT will take care of that when the time comes. And that actually may be true to a certain extent, but DOT still needs land available in order to do that and build those roads. There's a couple other, there's actually numerous, many other items, less serious sounding than traffic and schools and emergency services, but I think it's still very important for our quality of life. You know, my, my son's nine and 10-year-old baseball team plays at Western Park. They get one practice per week and they have to split their time on the field with another team because there's not enough fields there at Western Park, and that's right now. So, you know, many folks are excited about how the future growth in Carteret County is heading, heading our direction, headed west. But are we planning for public areas to include parks, to include, you know, like an arboretum or even baseball fields? So I just, we just want to ask that as we go forward, we think about those things and not end up with 17 disconnected, unified parcels and subdivisions, but actually have a unified, linked town.
Next up is Danielle Freeman.
Good evening, neighbors. My name is Danielle Freeman. I live at 201 Star Hill Drive. And unlike Dot, I moved here five years ago, purchased our home, my husband and I. My husband's not here this evening. I'm a terrible speaker, by the way, but I'll get better as I get rolling, I hope. And I'm not sure exactly how I feel about this, but I think it's important to raise my voice and that's why I'm doing this. So I'm coming forward with a cautionary tale of my husband and I and our movement to Cape Carteret. We came as retirees. We researched the area. We were charmed by how the town was founded and that the ancestors of the founders were still here and involved and that this was a community that we wanted to be part of. And I said that word charm. It was, it's the charm that drew, that drew us and the wildlife. I live on Pettiford Creek. And my cautionary tale is, and I'll be talking about a kayak park, a kayak launch a little bit, but I feel it's relevant. We purchased our home in 2018, but we didn't move into the home until 2019. And that was a crucial year because in that year, plans were made to buy a piece of property on Highway 58 and make a kayak launch. Our piece of property looked like the lagoon on Gilligan's Island when we, when we moved here. And there's still aspects of that in our backyard. We have otter and alligators. I like the gators now. I've named the otters, I've got Mookie Wilson and Curly Joe Besser. We, we were away, we didn't come to these meetings and we should have. We sent emails. We sent an email to Mr. King who assured us that aesthetically the kayak launch was going to blend into, into the nature. And of course, I went by my imagination that it would be wood, that it would be, that it would be all wood and that there would be a wood ramp and there would be a wood handrail. That wasn't what it was. It's, we considered buying the property that was there to stop it. And then we thought, you know, we were being selfish because it is beautiful back there and everybody should be able to see it. So we like share. But I, and I'm thinking of the previous speaker, it's so important to think about the end result and the big picture and the charm of our community. And I'm getting the cane. But I hope we, I hope we do that. And I hope that the vision, you know, some of the things that you said, you know, are unclear. There's no guarantee, there's no guarantee of what it's going to look like in the end. And this is, even though it's, this is a big moment here, there's no going back from here. And I ought to go, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and finish Danny.
Go and finish Danny, you got time?
We got time.
But, well, I think you guys got the gist. Oh, but, well, I think you guys got the gist of what I, what I'm saying is that this is really, even though it's a zone and it's not clear where, where, what's going to happen from here, this is a really big moment. And, and, um, I'm nervous about it. And I, and, and I don't know if, if I, if we're entitled to be assured that it will be beautiful and that there, there, that, that it will be clean and that it will be charming. I, I don't know that we can be guaranteed that, but I, I sure would like to be guaranteed that. So, um, now I'm done.
Thanks, Danny.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about the town center concept that didn't sign up? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to come out of public comment, public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're now back into, back out of public hearing. You know, I heard some questions from Commissioner Barnhill, Commissioner Watts, and heard from two, two public citizens. I would just like to ask the board to be sure before I ask for a motion that you're, you're comfortable with all of this. And, uh, if you need more time, there's no shame in asking to table it. You may come up with some more questions.
Senate's table it.
All right. Have a motion to table it. Second, all in favor. Unanimous. We'll table it until next month.
I just want to bring the questions that were asked in the planning board's next meeting.
I would encourage any, any citizens in Cape Carteret that have any questions to reach out to you commissioners or the town manager. Item number 14, ordinance rezoning west side of Bog Sound Drive from R-30 to R-10. Before we get into this, uh, I have a question that, or two that I need to ask the town attorney. Brad, I'm going to ask the board to table this until next month, but would it be appropriate to allow Frank to give his, um, talking points and to allow the public comment?
Yeah, I think the public hearing would be important just because we've already advertised for it and it may be helpful when you table the matter.
That, that's my thinking. I just want the legalities of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, knowing that I will be asking the board for motion to table it, but for now, we, uh, need to hear from, um, Frank Rush.
Give you a, a brief overview. So, um, the area that you see on the map that is bound by the darker line, uh, is currently zoned R-30. That's a single-family residential zoning district. Um, the area in green is zoned R-10. Uh, this is the Bay Shore Park area predominantly, Country Club Point over in this area. Um, the planning board, uh, discussed this issue at two of its recent meetings, uh, and ultimately recommends that the board rezone these 18 parcels here in the dark area from R-30 to R-10. And the rationale from the planning board was that the character of the existing development in this area, um, and its proximity to the Bay Shore Park area, uh, that it would be more appropriate to zone this property to R-10. Uh, so that's the proposal. Uh, that's before the board for consideration tonight. Um, it is the area from 104 Bog Sound Drive down to 206, uh, which is generally right in the area where the culvert is that the town recently replaced, uh, for stormwater. So it doesn't go all the way down to, to Bog Sound Drive. It stops right about that parcel. Couple of things for the board to understand. Um, so in the art, both zoning districts are somewhat similar. Uh, all three of our single-family residential zoning districts are fairly similar, but here's the key differences. Um, so in the R-10, uh, you're allowed to place a mobile home, uh, but in the R-30, you're not. So currently in the green area, there are some mobile homes in that area. Uh, there are none in the yellow area over here. This would allow mobile homes, also allows traditional single-family homes. The, one of the differences is that in the R-30 zone, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. Uh, in the R-10 zone, it's 15,000 square feet. The reality is, is what you see is what you get here. I don't believe any of these parcels are large enough to be subdivided anyway, but each one of them could have a new single-family home on them in the future. Uh, in R-10, we allow Marina uses. Uh, R-30, we do not. Uh, there's one parcel down here that's, uh, touches an existing canal that heads out to Bog Sound. Um, in the R-30, we currently allow child daycare and in R-10, we don't. So that's something that would no longer be allowed for those 18 parcels if you rezone it. Um, there's a slight difference in the setbacks. So the front yard setback in the yellow, R-30, is 40 feet. In the green, the R-10, it's 35 feet. So it's a little more flexible for someone to place a home uh, on the lot. The rear yard setback in R-10 is 10 feet. Um, in the R-30, it's 40 feet. So that makes it, uh, easier, gives them a bigger building envelope, uh, in the R-10 zoning district. So it'll make it a little bit easier. Uh, as you all, I think, know, some, several of these lots are on the small side, and so it will make it a little easier for folks to put a home there. Uh, currently of those 18 parcels, um, a total of 11 of them, 11 of those lots have single-family homes. Seven of those lots are vacant. Um, and so the, the proposed rezoning, again, really intended to make it consistent with the Bay Shore Park neighborhood. Uh, we have notified all of the affected property owners. Uh, we've also placed signs in the area. Uh, we've also notified all of the adjacent property owners, uh, on both sides of, of the street. Um, and then we've also placed advertisements in the Carteret News Times, and you've got that documentation and your packet as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, as the town attorney mentioned, it would be advisable to conduct the public hearing tonight, um, regardless of whether you intend to make a decision tonight.
Any questions for Frank? Okay. Uh, need a motion to enter public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Yes. Second. All in favor?
Oh.
We're now in public hearing. We have one person signed up, Jimmy Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Lawrence. I live on Bog Sound Drive in the Bay Shore subdivision. I'm here to express the reasons on why our street should not be rezoned. When you decrease the size of the lots, you're increasing the number of houses on the unit. Along with this comes with more people, more traffic and putting more strain on our infrastructure. Our area is made up of an area where people live permanently, more so than renters. With more people, you run the chance of more crime. Our subdivision is no longer a fish camp or trailer park, as some people think. Finally, when you rezone these five lots on Bog Sound, and why are you rezoning these five lots on Bog Sound and no other subdivision in the area? Why not leave the rezoning ordinance alone so more valuable homes can be put in our neighborhood and improve in Cape Carteret? Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Can you come up, can you come up to the microphone so we can hear you? This meeting's being recorded, so we, everything comes through. And your name and address, please.
David Grady, 126 Bog Sound Drive. And we're not down here permanently. We came here in 18 and 19, right after the hurricane. Uh, I had to jump through hoops, ridiculous hoops to put my house where it's at right now. We had to, uh, go to Zach Steffey when he was on the planning board. I had to go to the county planner. I had to go to the city planner. I had to go, they had problems with my map. They said the, whatever map it is on the thing was off. I mean, we had to jump through a lot of hoops. Uh, it, it was just, it was a pain in the butt getting put here.
The other question I have, you said you had to have 15,000 square foot. A lot of those lots you're looking at are 10 by 200, 50 by 200, which makes them 10,000 square foot. So what can you do with those?
Yeah. So a, again, to clarify for everyone, um, the minimum lot size in the green, the R-10, is 15,000 square feet. That's if you were creating a new lot. And of the 18 parcels that are located here in the proposed rezoning area, I don't think any of them are large enough that they could be subdivided, i.e. in order to increase the number of lots here, you'd have to have one of these that's at least 30,000 square feet, because any new lot has to be 15,000. I say that because I'm not sure of the size of this one right here, and I'm not sure of the size of this one down here, but I think they're less than 30,000 square feet. And I'll certainly get that information for the board, uh, when you discuss this issue again, but.
Some of those lots are already 10,000.
Yeah. So let, let me finish. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I'm being clear with everybody. So if it's an existing lot, regardless of how large it is, uh, the, at the owner is entitled to build a home on that lot, provided they can meet the appropriate front setbacks and rear setbacks and side setbacks and get a septic permit and whatever other requirements are, are provided. So every single one of those lots, there's seven of them that currently don't have a home on them. The, the owner of that property could put, uh, a home on that lot if they can meet the setbacks and get a septic permit. So that wouldn't change.
When you said 15,000 square foot, I was like, if I go and buy one of these lots, is that going to restrict me to do it?
No. If, if, any of those lots that are on that map right there, that, that owner can place a home on that lot, if they meet the setbacks and get a septic.
But can I buy that lot and then put something on there?
You could.
Even though it's 10,000 square foot, because I couldn't when we first got here.
That's right. Yeah.
Zach Steffey talks, he was going to stop me for three square foot.
Yeah. So that was a change that the board made probably two or three months ago. Um, we adjusted that ordinance and so, and it's not just this area. It would be anywhere in the town. If the lot doesn't meet the minimum lot requirements, you can develop it as long as you can meet the setbacks and get a septic permit and so forth. So, and, and if you're a new buyer, you can do that also.
How about single-wide trailers? Can you move those in on that lot now too? If it's rezoned to that?
So that's one of the.
Can somebody take a 1956 trailer and move it in? I mean.
We want it to be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, to, to be clear, for everyone's sake, in the yellow area now, we do not allow mobile homes. In the green area, we do allow mobile homes. And the proposal that the planning board put forth was to change that yellow area, those 18 parcels to green. So that would allow mobile homes in the future. Now, they certainly would have to meet whatever applicable building code requirements there are and so forth. I think it's unlikely it would be an old 1950s era mobile home, but I'm not an expert on the building code, but.
Not allowed.
Yeah.
Any more questions, Don? All right. Anybody else?
I want to speak. I didn't sign up.
Would you step up, uh, give your name and address, please?
My name is Maggie Ryder. Um, my father-in-law, we have a home at 215 Bog Sound Drive. Um, and my father-in-law bought that lot back in the early seventies. I have the original survey maps when Larry was running, which my husband took over to the island before it was an E V bridge. So I have seen that neighborhood from the, I've been married to mine has been here for four years, how it has changed. My concern about these lots here would be environmental impact. You're looking at changing and putting 15,000 square feet. Minimum size of a home would be what? Whatever size it's supposed to be. That'd be a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, two-bath. You're going to have to have septic. Where's your repair field? Your septic, if your septic fails, and this has been known to happen, perfectly good septic fails. So what are your options on a 15,000 square foot lot? So, and you're talking about putting mobile homes. So does that include if someone wants to move in a park model and rent it out? That, I mean, those are my concerns there because we did, Frank, and you and I have talked about, we did, we dug the ditches for the stormwater management and everything else. And I have seen where the water goes in that neighborhood. Lived there long enough. My husband has too. And when you're that close to, you know, you see the end of the creek there, but if you go back behind there, and when hurricanes like Florence and Fran, that turns to slush and mud. And you got septic tanks and you got water. Everybody knows in our neighborhood, what happens. Majority of those and all of those green things, their septic's will run 25 to 30 years. They're due to fail. They're going to have to, because we do not, in Cape Carteret, have the infrastructure to support what we're talking about. So my concern there is when you start putting these trailers on these super small lots, you've got a really nice house and you've got a C Y trailer. I'm not particularly against that, but you're still running septic tanks every now and then. And when, when another one comes like, um, Florence and she goes 32 inches of rain over four days, then we got creek water back there and tributaries and everything else that is polluted with gray water. And where does it go? It goes into your gardens. It goes into your yards where your kids play. And, you know, my husband and I are both retired. So I have been a community and a citizen of this town for a number of years. I have a great number of friends. He was back from, you know, we, we've been with, so my concern is that there. So let's just see how we move forward. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Steve that we table it, because I think there's a lot more discussion here. As many as retired people, but I've got kids and I have property here, and that's where they intend on retiring and/or living with their kids. So this, this isn't a short-term solution. This is environmental. Now, we're going to have to look forward. And I agree with you on the estuaries and the kayak. I live here because I like the small town. I enjoy going out and seeing the deer and kayaking and catching a few drum, catching a few frowners. I can't really do that anymore, but, you know, you can, those are other issues we'll talk about. So as we move forward with this, I agree with tabling it, that we get together as a community, we talk about it, we learn what and where and who's coming in. Because, you know, good Lord, Southern Lewis said, we were one of the best places in the country to live in. Here we go. And so thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else that wants to speak while we're here?
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, i- i- if I could just, I want to clarify something for everyone, because I don't want anyone to have a misunderstanding. Whether the board approves the rezoning or does not approve the rezoning, the seven vacant lots that are located in that area can still be developed. People can put a single-family home on those lots. I think there's probably a 95% likelihood of each one of those lots could support a single-family home, probably be on the smaller side. But I don't want anybody to leave tonight thinking that if the board does not approve the rezoning, that those lots are going to stay vacant, because they will not. And I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. Well, the, the planning board has recommended to the Board of Commissioners that we rezone it from R-30 to R-10, which is, it still allows development to occur. It just has different rules. It quite frankly has more flexible rules, so. And I think those are reasonable concerns for the board to consider. And ultimately, it's the Board of Commissioners' job to make those decisions and weigh those concerns. But the, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the decision for the board is not whether or not someone can put a house on those seven lots. It's what kind of home and also what the setbacks would be. That's the decision point.
Okay. Anybody else, anybody else will speak? Will come up to the microphone and speak? If not, we'll, uh, take a motion to exit public hearing. A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I would like to.
The only thing I would ask is if you make a motion to table to a date, sir, and so that these folks know where, when to come back.
I got you. I want to make a motion to table this agenda item until the next meeting, next Board of Commissioners meeting, which will be the second Monday and, okay. And I recommend to every one of you that's got an interest in this to reach out to either Frank Rush with any questions you have. That's what he's here for. Or any of these commissioners up here, including myself. I'd like to make a motion to table this agenda item until next Board of Commissioners meeting next month. Is that good? Second. All in favor? Motion passed unanimous.
Steve, are we going to send it back to the planning board and review?
We may, once we look at it the next.
Okay. So what we may want to recommend to the citizens. Okay, so what we may want to recommend to citizens who spoke, start showing up in your planning board meeting and make your voices heard. And please understand one thing, all right? This is no longer Zach Steffey's town, Zach Steffey's town, okay? It's a headache for this town.
We're going to move on to presentation of the budget. Before you start, Frank, I would just like to tell the people that were here for various issues, this is going to be a long drawn out. If you want to leave, I wouldn't blame you. If you want to stay, we welcome you to stay, but it's going to be a long drawn out process.
... What is in that zone? You know what I'm saying? I saw that and you know I stuck with you on the food.
Okay, Frank. Wait a minute, excuse me, clerk's not here, just hold on a second.
Oh, okay.
So Ryan. No. But I can feel my mouth is dry already, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Frank, got the budget presentation, lay it on us.
All right, so tonight, I'm just pleased to present the recommended budget to you. This budget was developed based on your collective and individual input over the past several months, as well as the input of town staff and myself. Tonight is the presentation to educate you and the public about what items are included and what the issues are. I expect that you'll have additional discussion and review of the budget in the coming weeks. Our budget workshop is scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., I'm sorry, next Monday at 6:00 p.m., May 20th, and that's also the formal public hearing. Once you complete that public hearing, the board can adopt the budget as it's presented or with any adjustments that you'd like to make. So very quickly, those of you who were here last year, you heard me say this last year and I always start it this way, so there's a picture of the six of you up there. And that's deliberate and intentional because ultimately you are the leaders of the town and you all need to make the decisions about what the town spends its resources on. And it's really all about setting priorities. So the goals that are included on these slides and that are reflected in the budget ultimately came from you, from the things that I heard you say collectively and individually in recent months. So the budget was put together trying to address these things. Number one, maintain the current property tax rate. Number two, maintain that quaint small-town feel, continue to work to improve the quality of life. One of the comments that came out of your budget workshop meeting was, put us in a financial position so we don't operate with financial stress. And so that was one of the key thoughts in this. Maintain high service quality, a lot of discussion about reassigning the school resource officer, make sure our police salaries are competitive, make sure we plan for future capital replacement and new investment, make progress toward a new town hall, police station building in whatever form that may take. Complete the trail, continue to work on the stormwater concerns, continue to improve our parks, implement the town center. And then lastly, from the board's budget workshop meeting, move to sell the property at 100 Taylor Notion Road, use it for the bicycle path, but try to restore those funds in fund balance or for some other board priority. So those are all the things that I heard you all say, again, collectively and individually. There's some other goals reflected in here that are basically coming from me, making sure that when we put together the budget, we're thinking about the future, that we're not setting ourselves up for problems in the future. Make sure that we provide meaning salary increases to our employees, but that they're fiscally responsible, let them know that we value them, but also be responsible with the public's money. One of the other goals was to utilize some of those surplus stormwater funds to achieve some of your goals. One of my goals for the town is to eliminate vehicle lease agreements and set us up on a pay-as-you-go approach for vehicles in the future, so that was in my mind as this recommended budget was prepared. I want to make sure that the town of Cape Carteret focuses on our customers. We're here for the people of Cape Carteret, for the people who live here, own property here, have made their lives here. We need to be helpful, we need to be courteous, we need to provide good customer service. In the end, particularly in a place like us, it comes down to community aesthetics. We want this town to look nice, we want it to be attractive. And then lastly, I try to avoid using any general fund balance. There's only limited circumstances you'll ever see me recommend that, one of them is going to be discussed here tonight. So I start with that because I want you all to know that this is very deliberate. It is based on what I perceive your goals to be for the community. Hopefully I got it right, if I didn't, you should absolutely correct me and you should change or adjust in any way possible. So, all right, the nuts and bolts, the numbers. So the recommended general fund budget, about 2.23 million for next year. That's a six, a little more than a 6% increase in our annually recurring expenditures. I'm pleased to say that it will maintain the current service levels. One thing that you'll undoubtedly notice is that the priority is law enforcement in this budget, we'll talk about that a little bit. Trying to advance some of the significant capital initiatives we've talked about and then also trying to set aside funds for capital replacement. In addition to the general fund, we have two multi-year project accounts that we've been using for stormwater. The projection is that we'll have about 138,000 left for any remaining stormwater improvements and we've got a little more than $500,000 available in that multi-year fund to build this last one-mile segment of the Cape Carteret Trail. So that's the high-level numbers of the budget. The tax rate, pleased to say it's not changing, at least in the recommendation, it's 21 cents, that's the current tax rate. Every penny generates about $48,000. So if you think about decreasing or increasing that rate, that's the metric, $48,000 for every penny difference. Tax base here is about $475 million. I'm pleased to say that there's no changes recommended to any of the other town fees. There's some slight changes for military banners, actually decreasing one of the fees because the pass-through cost from our vendor went down a little bit. But otherwise, the cost of town government for the people of Cape Carteret would be the same next year as it is in the current year. I think the revenue estimates are reasonable, they're based on recent history and any known factors going forward and we've tried our best to carefully control expenditures. Just a high-level graph, I know it's a little bit hard to read, but really just to point out on the revenue side, this big purplish-blue, that's your property taxes. That's our largest revenue source, it's a little more than a million dollars, about 45%. The yellow here is sales tax, that's about 22%. There's an estimate of nearly 500,000 for next year. Even though that's not the largest one, that's the most important one because the property tax revenues don't change a whole lot each year. The sales tax could make or break you going forward, so it's important for you as the elected officials to make sure you're monitoring that and that you're comfortable with that. I think we're generally doing okay on that front, but that's the, really the most important revenue source. This is intergovernmental, restricted intergovernmental revenues, various things, utility franchise taxes and other things included in there. So I mentioned property tax, a little more than a million dollars. The average value property in Cape Carteret's going to pay about 537, $57, $37? My God, I need some glasses. Next year, that's about the same as the current year. Overall, we're looking at about another $39,000 of property tax revenue, that's from the county updating all of the assessed values and it's also from growth, new construction in the community. That's a really healthy number for us, that's a little bigger than usual. Sales tax, 495,000, that's a little bit less than what the adopted budget included, I've been watching that real close all year long. I think we're okay, we're going to come in a little bit less than last year, but I don't think we're going to be too far off. There's a couple-month lag in the sales tax revenues, so this is based on collections through March. So we don't have April, we don't, obviously don't have May or June at this point in time. So again, it's the most important revenue source because it changes. And here's a graph historically of the sales tax revenue, you can see for the last three years, we're pretty consistent, had a big jump up four or five years ago, again, half a million dollars. Some of the other key revenues, ABC profits, the recommended budget has 162,000, I think we're coming in right on target for that this current year, even despite the county holding back the growth for one year. We look pretty good so far, so hopefully that'll continue. Utility sales tax, 147,000, that's basically the sales tax on your electric bill is the biggest chunk of that. Pal bill, $92,000, I think that'll probably get us anywhere from a half to three-quarters of a mile of street resurfacing next year. Boat ram permit fees, $90,000, that's a considerable revenue source for us. Investment earnings, in the current budget, we projected $5,000. Earlier this fiscal year, we made a change in the investments for idle town funds and we moved them into instruments that are essentially tied to the federal funds rate. They're very safe, they're completely liquid and they're higher yield and we're earning about 5% right now. So our investment earnings have really been up this year, who knows what the Fed will do with rates, it looks like they're going to stay higher for longer than we might all like right now, but we need to watch that going forward. For next year, I assumed a 3.25% return on $2 million of idle funds, I think that's probably reasonably safe, but if all of a sudden the Fed cuts the rate significantly, we'll have to look at that and adjust it. We may want them to personally, but maybe not for the town's revenues, but it just depends, if you're buying something, you want them to cut them, if you're investing, you want to earn. The other big impact is rental income, so we're expecting an additional $24,000 and some change next year. That's with the lease of Unit B in the McLean Drive Building where the police department used to operate. So that helps next year's budget. There's a recommendation that we use 41,740 from the stormwater fund. I mentioned to you a few minutes ago that we would have about 138,000 left for stormwater improvements, that's after we theoretically use this 41,740. So if you chose not to use that for some of the items in the general fund, we'd have 41,740 left in that fund. So we're, as you know, we've accomplished a lot of our goals with those funds and we'll primarily be using public work staff to work on other stormwater areas in the town. And then for the fiscal '24-'25 budget, does not rely on any fund balance for next year's budget. One caveat to that for the current year, which I'll talk about in a little bit. General fund expenditures, if you look at just about every city or town's budget, you'll see that this light blue color is the biggest one, that's the police department. And so in most communities, that's the largest expenditure. In our case, you've got admin in purple, you've got public works and solid ways, that's the bulk of town spending recommended for next year. I think that the recommended budget honors your priorities, but again, if it doesn't, you should adjust this in any way you think better aligns with your vision and your priorities. So the key things on the expenditure side, so the SRO would be reassigned for community-wide patrol and response. The town would provide the full funding for that existing police officer position, he would be moved into general community responsibilities. The budget does not include nearly $37,000 worth of grant funds and $17,000 of contributions from the other towns that help support the school resource officer. As we've discussed in the past, the expectation is that whatever law enforcement agency provides the SRO, they would benefit from those funds. So the budget is built, assuming we're reassigning that SRO to general law enforcement duties. And I certainly hope that another larger agency will pick up that responsibility. One of the other key things in the budget is an increase in the police officer starting salary to $50,000 per year. We're currently at 46,000, just as little as about a year and a half ago, we were at 40,000. So we've made a very deliberate investment in law enforcement salaries to try to stay competitive. You've certainly seen the articles in the paper about other departments and increasing salaries. We think that the 50,000 figure will keep us competitive, but we don't know what other towns are proposing as part of their budget process, which is going on basically at the same time as ours. So the total cost, we made some other salary adjustments, we took the salary, starting salary up to 46,000 back in January. The total cost of all this is a little more than $52,000, it's in the recommended budget. There's also 12,000 for a new speed radar trailer for the police department, I'm sure you've seen these things in other communities, when you drive by it, it tells you your speed and hopefully serves as a warning to motorists to slow down. That 12,000 is tied to some of those excess stormwater funds, that's one of the items. We've got 20,000 for part-time police coverage, Chief Silva's been working hard to bolster the part-time roster. He's requiring part-time officers to work a minimum of 16 hours per month, that would be sufficient funding to cover that, gives us additional coverage in the neighborhoods. We are eliminating one full-time position in administration, we've replaced it with a part-time administrative assistant, that winds up saving us about $40,000 and helps make some of the other things possible that are included in the recommended budget. One of the things that's in here that I think is probably going to get some discussion by the board, I proposed allocating $50,000 per year into a new capital replacement reserve fund. And the way that I am accomplishing that in the recommended budget is essentially by asking you to approve the use of fund balance in the current year to pay off our existing enterprise fleet leasing obligations. So the good news for us is we got a lot of new vehicles and they're in generally good shape. We don't have too many issues or problems right now, but I can see a day, two to three years from now, hopefully a little bit longer than that, where we're going to start to have some issues and we're going to want to replace some of those police vehicles, maybe pickup truck and public works, et cetera. As we've discussed in the past, I think it's important to start planning for that, it's nothing to panic about right now, but I don't want it to bite us. So we set aside, in our current budget, there's about $53,000 that goes toward these monthly lease payments for police vehicles. And we've got a grand total remaining obligation of about $111,000 left over the next couple of years. The proposal in the recommended budget is to take the 111,000 from fund balance, pay it off, free up that capacity for replacement of vehicles in the future, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Did I just hear you say that we've got 111 left to pay for vehicles?
Correct.
Our obligation is $55,000 a month? Or did you mean a year?
I meant a year, I'm sorry, if I said month, I apologize, yeah, no, it's per year. Yeah, we've essentially got two years worth, it's not quite that, the way the schedules shake out, but that's a practical impact. So that's something that I think you all should discuss when we get into the budget workshop meeting, whether or not you want to do that. It does require the use of fund balance in the current year budget. In some ways, you're kind of taking 50,000 of that money and putting it right back in a capital reserve fund too, and we'll get into more of those details. So the bottom line is, I think we just need to start planning for replacing these vehicles at some point. There's a 3.8% cost of living increase for other town employees, that comes at a cost of about $20,000, that's consistent with the CPI change in March, which was the most recent data that I had when this was put together. Good news on our health insurance, just a 2.7% increase, I always kind of hold my breath for that number, was pleased that it was not very significant this year. One of the things that we've been doing is we had employees that we provided health insurance to that really didn't need it because they have it through spouses or through retirements from other organizations. And so we basically set up a program where we essentially, if we don't give them the health insurance, we share the savings with them. And so that saves us about $21,000 and that's reflected in here as well. So it helps the town and it helps the employee by putting a few extra bucks in their pocket. Some of the other notable items, there's $20,000 for a new bulkhead at Easy Street, you know, we talked about doing that in the current year, we delayed it while we applied for the grant. Hopefully we get the grant and then that 20,000 would be available for the board to use on some other. So the bottom line is I think we just need to start planning for replacing these vehicles at some point. There's a three point eight percent cost of living increase for other town employees. That comes at a cost of about twenty thousand dollars. That's consistent with the CPI change in March, which was the most recent data that I had when this was put together. Good news on our health insurance, just a two point seven percent increase. I always kind of hold my breath for that number. Was pleased that it was not very significant this year. One of the things that we've been doing is we had employees that we provided health insurance to that really didn't need it because they have it through spouses or through retirements from other organizations. And so we basically set up a program where we essentially, if we don't give them the health insurance, we share the savings with them. And so that saves us about twenty-one thousand dollars and that's reflected in here as well. So it helps the town and it helps the employee by putting a few extra bucks in their pocket. Some of the other notable items, there's twenty thousand dollars for a new bulkhead at Easy Street. You know, we talked about doing that in the current year. We delayed it while we applied for the grant. Hopefully we get the grant and then that twenty thousand would be available for the board to use on some other priority that you may have. If we don't get the grant theoretically, it'd be used to build the bulkhead at Easy Street sometime later this year. Ninety-two thousand for street resurfacing, exactly the pal bill number. Again, half to three quarters of a mile, depending on where we do it. We're focused on old Cape Carteret for this coming year. I did increase the street sweeping frequency from four times a year to six times a year. It's relatively inexpensive, was an extra three thousand dollars. So there's nine thousand in there for street sweeping. There is ten thousand for Christmas decorations included in there with the thought that Public Works constructing something nice that would make a splash when you enter town this Christmas season. Twenty thousand again for the fall festival. That's supported by ten thousand dollars of sponsorships that we're actively working on now. We brought in right at about ten thousand for the twenty-three festival. There's a three point four percent adjustment in the solid waste contract. That's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. As I mentioned to you at one of the previous recent meetings, that contract's coming to an end next year. If we want to change anything, we probably need to start talking about that later this year. And then there's some really boring and expensive but unnecessary, but absolutely necessary things. At the end, we've got IT services, legal fees and our annual financial audit and some third-party accounting to make sure that we've got proper internal control. So you know, there's roughly a total of about seventy-five thousand dollars there in the administration budget for those things in the governing body budget. Fund balance. You heard me mention the idea of using about a hundred and eleven thousand to retire those vehicle lease obligations. If you would like to do that, my intent would be to include a budget amendment on your June meeting agenda for you to consider, pay off those lease agreements. And then again, that frees up the fifty thousand dollars for the capital replacement reserve next year. If you don't want to do that, we'll save the fund balance. And instead of, I'm projecting two million, one, two point one, three million basically is what the projection is at June thirty. That assumes that we spend the hundred and eleven thousand. So if we don't spend the hundred and eleven thousand, it'll be right up around two point two-five million, give or take. So that'll be a key decision for you all as we go forward. And then of course, if we wind up selling the Taylor Notion Road property and if that goes into fund balance, that would increase that number. Comes out to ninety-six percent of the recommended budget. Your policy, which you just updated a few months ago, requires fifty percent to be specifically reserved for disaster response. So we're well above that threshold. There's your fund balance. Over the years, you can see just six years ago, we were down a little over a million dollars. And now we're up in the two million dollar range. So kudos to the folks who came before to build up that fund balance. I think it's incumbent on us to keep it relatively stable going forward. Stormwater improvements, when we started the multi-year fund, we had eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars appropriated from grants and ARPA funding. I mentioned before, we expect to have about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand left for the remaining locations. The trail, we, the multi-year fund had a total appropriation of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. We have about five hundred and one thousand available for construction. And as you, as you learned recently, we finally received the last permit we needed to build that. So we'll be going out for bids on that project here sometime in the next few weeks or so. So we've got about five hundred thousand to construct that in that project account. I expect a new multi-year capital project account for the NC twenty-four multi-use path. We've not received the written notification yet, but we've received notification that we're going to be awarded seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar local match. In the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget, there's nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty. That's the local match for the design work, which if the board accepts the grant, we would undertake the design work during the next fiscal year. Then we would work toward construction the following year, perhaps even the following year after that. So that nineteen thousand, seven forty local match is in there. That's ultimately tied to some of those excess stormwater funds that I mentioned earlier. One of the things we're going to have to come up with in the future is the rest of the local match. So about a hundred and seventy-four thousand for the construction and we'll be working on that. I still want to come up with a future capital replacement improvement program. I didn't quite get there this year, still working on that and trying to come up with good revenue sources. The biggest projects that we've talked about in recent months are a potential new building and then that highway twenty-four multi-use path. And we're going to need to be diligent and aggressive with grants, I think, for other improvements. So looking ahead, I think the budget's generally conservative. I think the estimates are reasonable. They're, I think, a good blend of being conservative and being, being a little more aggressive maybe than my predecessor might have been. But I think reasonable estimates, they're rooted in what we've actually received and what we're seeing this year. I mentioned earlier, we need to plan for the vehicle and capital replacements. There's some other concerns that are still several years away, but I just want you all to be thinking about them. The Fed rate, you know, who knows what that's going to be in two years or three years, right? And will those investment earnings still hold up? If we do demolish the building on WB, WB McLean Drive, there's roughly sixty-four thousand dollars of lease proceeds there that we may not receive in the future if we don't have tenants there going forward. I think realistically, even in a best-case scenario, we're at least a couple of years away from making that a reality and maybe longer. And then the boat lease ramp, the boat ramp lease expires in twenty thirty-one, so seven years from now. But that ninety thousand dollars is in there and our actual direct expenses probably wind up being around twenty thousand dollars that we would actually cut. There's lots of other expenses associated with that facility, but they're kind of spread out among various staff that would not be as easy to just simply say, cut ninety thousand dollars. You could do it, but it's just not that simple. So again, just want you to be thinking about these things going forward. So I always like to put this in perspective. You know, basically it costs our average taxpayer forty-five dollars a month to fund. And so that's a lot cheaper than a lot of other things in our daily life. And you get that twenty-four hour police coverage. You get all these public work services, you get the parks and so forth, the trash pickup, all of those things. I'm sure that there are probably some rural areas where it costs people forty-five dollars a month just to get their trash picked up. So overall, I want you to recognize that the town has historically, I think, been a good steward of the public's funds and has kept the cost of local government manageable. And your challenge is to continue that, I think, going forward. But you know, for example, even if you bought a cup of coffee in a gas station every day, you're probably getting up close to forty-five dollars a month. So to keep it in perspective. The other thing I do is always prepare this itemized receipt. I know you can't read that, but there's a copy of it in the budget booklet. And it basically breaks it down, you know, of that forty-five dollars a month, how much of it's going to police, how much of it's going to public work? So if you get a chance to check that out, please do so. So looking at other towns, right? So there's the tax rates for last year or for the current year, I should say, of all the other nearby towns, there's Cape Carteret, twenty-one cents. We're on the low end. And so I think that's been a deliberate policy decision to keep taxes as low as possible here in Cape Carteret. But you can see the other communities here, most of them are much lower than us. Obviously, Bog and Pelletier are very low, Cedar Point, and they're very small places. So then you look at the history, right? So we got fourteen full-time positions. So that's a net decrease of one. We did have fifteen, now we have fourteen and we're doing the best we can and I think providing good service with good people for the people of Cape Carteret. The tax rate's been stable for the last six years. It's been either twenty-one and a quarter cents or twenty-one cents each of those years. That's a pretty good track record. And it takes very careful, thoughtful planning to make that happen. And our fund balance is still really good. I mean, we're in pretty good shape, you know, two point one, two point two million dollars is a good fund balance for a town the size of Cape Carteret. So what's next? Your budget workshop, public hearing next Monday, six o'clock here in this room. A workshop potentially scheduled for the twenty-eighth at six o'clock if necessary. If you would like other meetings, we certainly can schedule that. Your next meeting's on Monday, June tenth. I would expect, hopefully, we'll be in a position for you to adopt the budget in whatever form you'd like by that time. But by law, you just simply have to adopt it by June thirtieth. June tenth is our last regular meeting before the June thirtieth deadline. If you need a special meeting, we can absolutely schedule that right up to June thirtieth, if you'd like.
Right, can we adopt, we can adopt the budget during the budget workshops since there's a public hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, you, the earliest you can adopt it is next Monday night after the public hearing. And we've advertised that as such as well. So again, the last slide, thanks for your patience and listening to me. It's all about priorities. That's really what it is. It's no different than the process you go through with your family or your home, your household. This is my recommendation. Hopefully I listened to you and did a good job. But if I didn't, you should absolutely adjust it in any way that more clearly reflects your priorities and your goals going forward. So goes back to the six people on the picture that I showed you at the beginning. So I look forward to working with you on this, starting right now or certainly next Tuesday. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them going forward and look forward to talking more.
Okay, next on the agenda is the town management report. You need, you need a minute to catch your breath, Frank?
No, no, I'm fine. I got some water, so. So several written things, just a couple of things to highlight for you. I mentioned we got the permit for the trail. Hallelujah. Looking forward to getting that thing built. And I hope to bring you a construction contract. I don't think it'll be the June meeting, hopefully by July, get that going. The first Sounds by the Sound concert on Wednesday, June twelfth at six-thirty. Right back, yes, sir.
Is there any money left over from this year that we could help maybe Sounds by the Sounds fund their part here in Cape Carteret? They're running a little short. I'm just going to ask that question while it's right here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we certainly, it's relatively inexpensive. We can accommodate something if you all have an interest in that. You want to talk to me about it before the next meeting and see, that'd be great. A couple of other things just to highlight for you. So there are five boat ramp passes left. And so we've been able to offer them to everyone who's come in the door for the last four plus months, but pretty soon we're going to have to tell people no. And I just want people to know that because we will be at the cap and we're coming into the warm boating season. There's a survey on the town's website about the Western Carteret Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. So if you know people who are interested in that, please ask them to check that out. It'd probably take them ten, fifteen minutes to complete it. Really appreciate the work that Public Works is doing on park improvements. They have made some nice improvements at the Manatee Street Park. They just added a new kayak storage rack. We improved the parking lot down there. They made some nice improvements at Ferry Landing Park. Just right, literally this week, they're finishing up improvements at the Bog Sound Drive Water Access Park and really trying to make all those areas look nicer and be more functional. We've got ten new picnic tables on order. They're the high-quality durable plastic materials going in every park. Hopefully here sometime in the next month, six weeks or so when they come in. We will secure them. I will defer to Ryan to make that happen, but we'll make sure they don't disappear, so.
Say again?
They are, I mean.
Need help, Tom.
But if somebody wanted to take away, it's a pretty good effort. But it's not possible.
They haven't stolen any benches yet, have they?
No.
Yeah.
We'll make sure.
And so that's it. Unless you have other questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer anything in here or anything else in your mind.
I would like to throw this out for the Big Rock grant application.
Yes.
Last year, Tommy Bennett and I are good friends and Tommy's director of the Big Rock. And last year we had a call-out where you donated ABC dollars and you had a chance of twenty thousand dollars to be donated to your town. We will be doing that same call-out this year. So anybody here, I'll let you know when the call-out is. And if you want to pledge it and we win the money, you can go to the chief to help with more, more things.
Understood.
Excuse me, man, I'm sorry. Tommy Bennett does a live TV show. And last year he, they had a raffle. He paid, I want to say it was either a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and fifty dollars and a chance at securing twenty thousand dollars for your town, okay, that you would donate. So we're going to do that again this year. And I would love to see that money come to Cape Carteret. If I win, I'm pledging it to the town. I'm counting on YouTube by at least two or three tickets. Oh, come on now.
Okay, next is Commissioner reports. We'll start with Commissioner Watts.
Okay. I wanted to go back to some of the comments, but since it's mainly season ticket holders left, I will make this kind of quick. I, I think to Mr. Lucas and Mrs. Freeman, I understand what you're saying. I, I share the same thoughts. I think this whole board shares the same thoughts. We have really been sort of working on this town center with, well, it's been quite a time. And we have, we and the planning board, thank you to the planning board, the previous planning board have really gone through this thing. And so we want to get it right. I, I share your thoughts about that. And so, you know, some of that and tabling that is making sure that we do get it right. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for telling us what you think. Uh-oh, no, you're. So and then the Mrs. Maggie Ryder, I, I think sort of the same thing goes for the, the Bog Sound. More we need to probably learn about that, more we need to investigate. And so thank you to, to this board for sort of tabling it for right now. And I think we're going to get it figured out and we're going to get it right. So and then in both of these things and all of these things, thank you to Frank and town staff. We're really trying to lay it out. We want to make sure that we're clear. We want to make sure that you understand what we're trying to do. I think the overall goal in this is to be accommodating to everyone that owns property. So with that, I, I will just sort of leave it at that. But thank you all for coming out. I wish the rest of them had stayed, but I understand kind of a long presentation. I get it. So anyway, thank you, everybody.
Commissioner Barnhill.
So again, I'd like to thank the people who come out for the public comment. That helps us make decisions. And I'd also like to thank Paxson and the planning board for the time and effort they put in helping to advise this board. There's a lot of commitment and time they put into it and help, to help us improve and give us recommendations for our future growth. Also, I'd like to welcome Jacob, the only one left here, yes? And Jessica and Sandra, so I think I got their names right. And also I appreciate the speediness of getting the kayak storage rack down at Manatee. I believe a lot of those already rented, so that's really good. And as far as the porpoise down at the boat ramp, I am in total agreement with that. I've gotten pictures of things I wish I could unsee that people have sent me that happened down there. So if we're going to have it, a boat ramp down there, I feel like that's something that we might want to think about, especially during busy times that they're going to be operating down there at the boat ramp. So that's it. Oh, no, one more thing. Get it for John gets there. The charters of freedom at the boat courthouse. If you get a chance to go see it, it's worth seeing. It's the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. But if you get a chance, go see it. I'll give it to you, John. You got your coins.
I got the coin. I got to fire the cannon.
Mr. Ritchie.
All right. First, I want to thank Cameron Watts for going to the commissioner's meeting last weekend to represent our town silently. I know he worked with some things that were kind of childish. So thank you, Cameron. And hopefully we'll have our sign writing contest here shortly. You know, glad that we got that behind us, number one. I want to thank Courtney for going down to the sounds of the citation of freedom. It's absolutely magnificent. If you can get there, take your children there, it's history right in front. It is the exact replication of documents in Washington DC in, on exhibit. And it's in cursive and you can see why John Adams signed it so big. And there's a lot of history there. And thank you to this board for standing together. I think it's the first time in a long time that we've had a unified board. We're all five are working on, on the same thing, so betterment of the town to keep us a good family town. And thank you, and I'm honored to serve with all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I don't have anything.
Nothing to say. I want to thank the citizens for coming out, too. I don't blame them for leaving because it's, budget is bored, about as boring as it gets, but Danny, in, in listening to your discussion, I feel like we failed you with what Ryan and I had talked about and with you planting some trees and whatnot. And I would like to get you and, and Frank and Danny to get, and Ryan together and make sure that you're pleased with, with what I promised. I had assumed it had been taken care of. If you're not happy, I'm not happy. So I'm asking the town manager, Frank Rush, to reach out to Danielle, along with Ryan, and, and take care of the situation. Also, want to...
The handrail, all of these is a slap of green paint.
You tell that man right there what you want, and he will make it happen. I promise you that. If he doesn't, you let me know. I've been noticing Commissioner, County Commissioner-elect Marion Waldorf back here every meeting for the last several meetings. Thanks for taking the interest in our town. I know you will probably represent a small swath of it. I'm not going to go into details about what we think about as far as what we need, but we're looking for a leadership on that board, and we hope that you will be one that can make that happen. So thanks for coming. Thanks for coming and, and, and listening to our meetings and getting the gist of things and see what kind of people we are. All we want is representation for our taxation. That's all I got. That's all I have to say, so entertain a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We're now going into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, just for the public, we're in a closed session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're back into open session. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm in motion.
Second, all in favor, raise your... Done.